Yes, the reason being that most of the funds that are received at Ghana Enterprises Agency are from collaborating partners and these funds when they are received are meant for some specific activities. For 2023, there were a lot of monies that came for grants which were given out to the MSMEs as grants and some money also came in for startup kits. So those startup kits were procured and given out to the MSMEs as startup kits. So that is the reason why the monies that came in, the money that went out was just about the money that came in.
Yeah, I see that on the grants you had about 284 million in 2023 as opposed to 2022 when you had 153 million. So the difference was about 130 million on the grants that you got, but then when it comes to the expenditure. The expenses went up by 43 million as opposed to in 2023 as opposed to that of 2022. What about consumption of our fixed assets?
Consumption of fixed assets is purposely the depreciation that are charged on PP, the property plants and equipment.
In one year it went up to 2.3 million.
Mr. Chair, in 2023, there were a lot of procurement respect to vehicles because of the projects that came on board for, for instance, the Ghana Economic Transformation Project, the Ghana Jobs and Skills Project and that of Masa Card Foundation. There were some vehicles that were procured and other plans that were procured. So that actually resulted in the increase in the consumption of fixed asset.
You see your current assets, it went from 9 million to 303 million. That's your non-current assets, but current assets went down. What caused that?
Honorable Chair, like I earlier indicated, sorry, I earlier indicated the non-current asset is basically the PP, the plant, property plant and equipment. So that went up in the year 2023.
Now your position on current ratio, it declined to 1 to 1 to 1. Huge difference right there. What happened and what are you going to do to recover?
Honorable Chair, the issue in 2023 was basically the agency moving on to use full accrual where the funds, part of the funds that were received from the collaborating partners which are not being utilized are deferred. When it's being deferred, it is pushed into the current liabilities. So this pushed the current liabilities up and that actually affected the current ratio.
Can you come again, please?
I'm saying that under 2023, the IPSS, the remaining funds under the collaborating partner, the monies that came in which were not utilized, that portion of that money was deferred. When we defer it, that goes under the current liability and this wells up the...
Monies that you did not utilize now turns into a liability?
The monies, sorry, the monies, the monies that were received, you receive it from a partner. So if you are not utilizing, if that money is not utilized, you cannot realize that's earned. So that money becomes a liability to the agency. So 2023, the previous, the subsequent year, when that monies are being used, you release it as revenue when it comes in.
You put the money in the current liabilities column because you were not able to use it and then in 20, in the ensuing year, you release it back. How, so how do you treat it?
So that portion now you credit the revenue, then you debit the liability. So the revenue now goes up, then the liability portion in the current liability will go down.
Auditors, can you confirm this treatment?
Honorable Chair, that is it. Because you are preparing the accounts under IPSS accruals, the money does not belong to them, so it has to be treated in the account as a liability. So in the ensuing years, they release it, the liability will be going down and then the revenue will be going up and then the expenses will, you know, take on. So that is how the treatment is done, which is acceptable.
So in 2024, I would see monies of close to 200 million because when you do the difference, about 200 million Ghana cedis coming in as income, pay your treatment.
Rightly so, Honorable, Honorable Chair.
Rightly so. Today is the 27th of October 2024. Rightly so. We'll take notes of that and when the accounts for 2024 comes, we will look at that. But, Mr. Chair, I just want clarification on something that I am seeing here. I see under the expenditure, different components of expenses. I see specialized expenses and I see other expenses. Current chair asked you why the increase in expenditure and you said you used it for, usually when the funds come in, they are directed for specific purposes. Was that captured under goods and services? You give me the explanation of the various expenses, the specialized and then the other expenses and I'm also asking whether that expenditure that saw you increasing the amount by close to 74.5% was captured under goods and services?
Honorable Chair, under expenses, yes, the goods and service, amount of 199244964.396, sorry, 93. Under goods and service, some of the expenditures were material and office consumables, utilities, general cleaning, rentals and leases, travel and transport, consultancy, training and seminars.
So stop right there, but when he asked you, you said that the total income that increased by 75 and the expenditure that came with it was usually to pay or to, to address the expenses of a particular program. But here you are telling us that it's for office consumables, it's for this, it's for that, it's for utilities. So then it did not go to address that specific payment of grants to people and all the other things that you mentioned? Because the auditors were specific that you saw your income go up by 75% and your expenditure also go up by 74% and gladly you told us that, oh, yes, it was to, I mean, take care of a program that that income had provided. But here we are, your goods and services is speaking to something directly different from that. And then you come to the specialized expenses and other expenses. Tell us what exactly they are.
Under, under specialized expense was, one was rent and the other one was impairment.
Didn't you pay any rent in 2022? Because the specialized expenses is zero for 2022, but 2.3 million in 2023.
Yes, in 2022, the rent component was paid directly under the Ghana Economic Transformation Project from Ministry of Finance, but in 2023, we have to pay from our end. The reason why in our financial, we don't have the rent in it.
Under goods and services, you mentioned lease also over there.
Yes.
So, so if there's a lease and then there's a rent, which one are we talking about? What, what is the lease for?
Normally the lease, I want to look at it, but normally the lease is for the equipments that, for the copiers that we lease for the activities of the agency.
You see, when it comes to 2022, you had a deficit of 6.4 million. And then 2023, a deficit of 9.5 million. So which direction are we going?
Honorable Chair, then this deficit basically as a result of the change, I mean, the movement from the cash or partially cash basis to that of accrual. Because other than cash, when funds are received like from a partner, we recognize everything as revenue for the year. But with this new, the IPSS, now we have to defer portion of the funds that are not being used. So it is pushed under the current liability, then previously, subsequently when it's used, then we realize, we recognize it.
When did you start with the IPSS?
Oh, 20, fully 2023.
Now, when I asked you earlier about grants, which resulted in 75% increase in your revenue, you say you used it for projects, but now that we are talking about the expenses, not all of it was used for projects. What portion of it did you use for projects?
Oh, Mr., Mr. Chair, I, I don't have that information here, but I don't have that information here, but the monies that are being used under the collaborating, under the collaborating partner funds, these monies go under the expenses. So that is why initially I mentioned that it's for those projects.
So your current ratio right now is artificial?
No, 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 it's, it's correct.
Because you go from 609.4 to 1 to 1.6 to 1.
Yes, it is because of the, the change.
And then definition for the other expenses, please. You've given us that of the specialized expenses and in your goods and services numbers, if clearly your projects are paid under goods and services, you should have an item or two showing that and you have the list in front of you. You have the breakdown.
But I'm sorry, if, if you can ask the question.
I asked for the definition of, of what you term specialized expenses, other expenses and then goods and services. So you gave us what you termed other expenses as rent, sorry, specialized expenses as, as rent. And I'm saying, give me a breakdown of the other expenses, what it, what it entails.
Honorable Chair, I, I'm, I'm, I'm sure the, the auditors might have put some figures together because if you look at my financial statement, financial statement, under expenses, I have compensation, I have goods and service, I have specialized expenses, I have grants, then consumption of fixed assets, so...
There's, there's no line item called other expenses.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have that one here.
And that is 77 million. So you have the specialized expenses as 2.3, your goods and services as 199.7 million Ghana cedis and then the other expenses. So anything found outside the specialized expenses and goods and services will be the other expenses. So then let us know what the others entail. Anything that falls outside specialized expenses, which you've explained to us, the goods and services, which you have also done and so all the others, I am sure will constitute other expenses. So if, so you can translate that for us.
Honorable Chair, from my financial, I have grants standing alone as item 38, which is the 77817646.84.
Aha, so this is going to buttress what you told us, that some monies came in and then you used it for a project. The grant is a project. So that is why we're asking you to let us know which projects did you spend this money? So then the other expenses goes to the grants that were given out for the incomes, the specialized incomes that came in?
Yes, grants.
Okay.
But as part of the, possibly we are, as part of the goods and service, we have consultancy expenses, which is basically the consultant that were engaged under the project, the Ghana Economic Transformation Project, the DJ Ghana Jobs and Skills Project. So the payment falls under their project, but it was captured under goods and service.
I, I, I get that. So then, now I know that the other expenses had to do with grants that were given. It's always important to, usually when you just see other expenses, 77 million, you should go further to find out exactly what it is because I know there are goods and services which speaks to expenses, the regular expenses. And then in here you have specialized expenses and then other expenses. That's why I wanted to prove further, to find out exactly what the other expenses entail and now it's been confirmed that you used that to pay grants.
Okay, now, oh, yes, sir.
Charlie, thank you very much. One quick observation, if you look on your income side, the first line item there, you find a non-tax revenue. In the, in the financials, you find non-tax revenue. There was, there seems to be a sharp decline in that. That is about 40%. What constitutes that and does that have any effect once it starts declining that way on the operations that you do?
Honorable, Honorable Chair, the non-tax revenue is a composition of, is a composition of goods and service and, and foreign, foreign exchange gain. Yeah, yes.
And that seems to be declining. The gains you make from foreign exchange seems to be declining because it declined by 41% between 2022 and 2023.
Honorable Chair, it's, it's dependent on the foreign currency that you will receive here.
Okay, now let's move to the management issues and it's on paragraph 1275. Honorable, Honorable Gappel will take care of that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This infractions is basically failure to save bond after steady leave with me and then the auditors have recommended that an amount of 42,254 be paid into auditor general's recovery account with interest. Can I please know the status of this infraction?
Honorable Chair, I said now, an amount of 32,769 Ghana cedis has been paid with a outstanding of 9,484.80.
Auditors, can you please confirm such amount?
Honorable Chair, an amount of 32,769 has been recovered, leaving a balance of 9,484.80 as he indicated. Thank you.
So when is the rest being paid? When are you paying the rest? Is Samira in the country? Is she in the country?
No.
When are you paying the rest of the money? This is government.
Samira is not in the country, but we are still following up to retrieve the...
Method did you use to retrieve the 32,000 plus?
We wrote follow-up, follow-up letters to her and then we were constantly calling her on phone and then giving her reminders officially. So that prompted her to come and pay, but we are still using the same method to retrieve the 9,000.
Just, just so we are informed and we get to understand how to handle this matters in future. In the, in the response you give to the auditors, you made claim that you wrote to the Ministry of Foreign Affairs, the ministry directed that you engage the NIB authorities. Did you do that? And is it that which triggered Samira to pay back the money? We want to understand the method that you used in doing that because we get this infractions a lot.
Honorable Chair, yes, that rightly so. We initially went, when we realized that she was not in the country, we went to the Ministry of Foreign Affairs, if we can get assistance, but they referred us to NIB. So they, there was a, we had a meeting with her lawyers and then they agreed to pay that amount, but they were, wanted to pay for one year, but the auditors required, they indicated that he's supposed, he's supposed to pay 42,000, which we are still following up for her to pay.
Mr. Chair, but keep on following up and then let's see how it goes. But I don't know why we are doing this to Madagana. If government spend resources on you to pay, I mean, you're on, you're on steady leave, save bond is become an issue and then they leave. Why are we doing this to Madagana?
Does she have any guarantees?
Yes, Honorable Chair.
And what role are they playing in the recovery of this amount?
Honorable Chair, we got into contact with them. So I think without standing, we'll still get in touch with them for them to support us to pay.
Okay. Madame, you, you seem to be complicating the matter. We are happy that there, there's been some recoveries. Are there timelines? We need full payment at that time because once you are in contact with her, you've spoken to the lawyers, there's some commitment coming from. Are there timelines? What is it that we have agreed with Samira Hussein to be paying, I mean, this debt? We want to understand that.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. I think in respect of recovering the remaining a little of 9,000, the lawyers we have spoken to on behalf of Ms. Samira, they are giving the indication that from their side, they think they've paid up to a certain point. So we should give them some time to reconcile with their payment receipt and get back to rest. And as recent as I think Thursday or so, we wrote a letter back to Ms. Samira through her lawyers. We are here to get a definite response.
Ms. Samira, if you are hearing us, even legal fees alone is more than the 9,000. Your name should not be appearing in audit reports. So please kindly do the needful. Japan money is plenty. Come and pay this money so that we are all free. Thank you.
You said you got in touch with the lawyers, weren't you?
Okay, so that was Thursday, the last time we got, last week, Thursday.
Okay. We need for you to follow up and keep the auditors updated on this because at some point we'll have to draw the curtain and collect the money from one of you. It's just that simple. Okay. Ghana Enterprises Agency, you are done. The next one is Ghana Trade Fair Company. Are you here? Okay, Honorable Abner Osayasari will, will take care of that, but Trade Fair, we have an issue from five years back. Five years back. We'll talk about that later.
Yeah, thank you. So let's, let's go to your income and expenditure and then I see a huge increment of 40 million from a million. In 2022, your revenue was 1.1 million and in 2023, 41 million. Can you tell us what necessitated that huge revenue? We all want revenue, but yes, we want to find out exactly how you came by the 40 million increment.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. This was an amount one of the developers, as we are aware, Trade Fair is undergoing redevelopment and we have developers on site who are together supporting us in, carrying out the redevelopment. So one of them was per the contract agreement we had with the contractor, he was supposed to remit some money to us, which have been, which we have agreed with them to pay in tranches. So the first tranche was supposed to have come in 2023, in the second quarter. So that was what caused the sharp increment in the revenue.
And what was this bit of revenue paid for?
It was meant for us to, for them to, it's actually a tech company. They are supposed to put in IT infrastructure into the project and as part of the agreement with them, they are supposed to pay us this amount. So the first tranche of it is what we received and it ballooned the revenue up as we can, we see.
So has this been done? Have you put the infrastructure, the IT infrastructure in place to the tune of the, the amounts paid you?
You know, Honorable Chair, we are not supposed to do that. We are supposed to, they are supposed to pay us the money, then they put the IT infrastructure into the developer. So when the lot is handed over to the developer, it's part of the commitment and the leasehold sum that is supposed to come to us.
So, so who are supposed to, who are those supposed to put in the infrastructure?
The infrastructure is supposed to be, is the developer is the one who is supposed to do the IADC, African Data Center.
Okay, so they have paid 40 million. So the 40 million was for what?
That was the first installment of their contract sum.
First installment of their contracts and what contracts?
Honorable, per the contract we had with them, we are supposed to allocate to them, I think, 5.5 acres of land on lease. Yes, so this money is the first tranche of the leasehold payment.
Because you said something different. You said it was for infrastructure. I'm asking you, after taking the 40 million, have you done the infrastructure? But you are now saying that it is for, the first tranche was for the leasehold payment to give them access to the place to put in the infrastructure.
Exactly.
So let's, let's be coherent in, in, in this. And then since you got the money, you had other incomes coming in. So for 2023, your total income was 45.9 million Ghana cedis. And then I saw your direct expenses, operating expenses go up by 100%. And then I saw your direct expenses, operating expenses, go up by a hundred percent. Yeah.
Yes.
Actually more than that, but I'm being, yeah.
Yes, rather so. Uh, as the development was going on, we were also not reneging or sitting down without carrying out our mandate.
So what exactly were you doing? That caused your operating expenses to move by a hundred percent?
Honorable, we were still.
All the um direct operating expenses.
Uh, we have a printing stationery, which was twenty-two thousand. We had publicity and adverts. That is always the chunk of our expenditure as far as organization of exhibition is concerned. That was two hundred and forty-two thousand four hundred and thirty-two Ghana cedis. Then we also have transport and travels, twenty-five thousand six hundred and fifteen. Then we have security expenses, forty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty. We have communication expenses, thirty-five thousand six hundred and forty. Then we have entertainment and protocol expenses. That is eighty-seven thousand. But the entertainment is entertainment, music and protocol expenses. Then we have fuel and lubricant, twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and forty-six. Cleaning and sanitation, forty thousand two hundred cedis. Then press allowance, forty-three thousand. Then we have public relation expenses, twenty thousand eight hundred Ghana cedis. We also have staff fair allowances or on the room. That is thirty-four thousand.
So um sir, clearly it tells you that you've seen money, you are spending money. Yes, because the items you mentioned, you have advertising and uh, and then you have um press allowance, you have communication allowance, you have, so you have, you have seen some money and so your, your, your expenses should go up because this is different from your administrative expenses. This is also different from your staff expenses. And we saw your staff expenses also moving by, the auditors have put here quite a huge amount of money, um, from five hundred and eighty-two thousand to one point one million Ghana cedis. So is it not a case of I've seen money, so let me also spend some?
Sorry, Honorable Chair, that is not so. It's about the number of events we organize and the anticipated expenses that it comes with.
So for every event that your staff organizes, you give them money, you pay them for that? Because um I, I, I see your staff expenses went up from five hundred and eighty-two thousand Ghana cedis to one point one million Ghana cedis. Unless you want to tell me as soon as you saw the money, you hide more staff?
Yes, some, we, we, we got additional staff.
Okay, so in twenty-twenty-two, what were your, what was your staff strength? And then in twenty-twenty-three?
Honorable, in twenty-twenty-two, we were just six.
Twenty-twenty-three?
Twenty-twenty-three, our number went up to thirteen.
To thirteen?
Yes.
Six to thirteen warrants and more than a hundred percent increment in salaries. That's okay, ended there. So uh we move to your total expenditure. When you made an income of one point one million, your total expenditure was two point six million. And when you made an income of forty-five, it also increased to three point six million. So it tells you, you see money, you spend money. Because you haven't been able to tell me exactly what, when I ask you to mention the direct operating expenses, the items you mentioned are not anything extraordinary that should warrant an increment. But that is how you feel you should run uh the public boards and so. I also see under um the same income and expenditure taxation amount of um ten million, ten point two million Ghana cedis. Can you explain to us?
Uh, it was uh tax provision for the year twenty-twenty-three. Having realized this income in, after preparing the financial statement, that was the first liability on us as corporate.
Isn't that too, too huge an amount? You, you realize an income of um forty percent and then you pay twenty-five percent on that? Is that, is that um what it is?
Yes, Honorable.
Is this actual or is just provision for tax?
It was provision.
So what was the actual?
The actual was just a little after nine, nine million.
So I mean, yes, on, on the whole, the money's brought in some improvement in your currency ratio, but that is um, that is to be expected. But at the rate at which you are going, if you see more money and you increase your expenses, it will not serve uh this public board any good. We want to see tangible expenses that can also raise money. We are not saying don't spend, but what we are saying is that whatever you spend on should be able to raise more money for um your, your company. That's, I think that's it.
Um, what was the, 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 the current status of the construction that is ongoing at your end? In terms of percentage?
Honorable Chair, respectfully, we have the horizontal works. And when I talk about horizontal works, I mean the drainage systems and the streets. It is about eighty-five percent complete. And then we have our flagship program, which is the multi-purpose um exhibition center, which is also about forty-five to fifty percent through. It is expected that by the next eight months it will be completed. Thank you very much.
And um it's purely donor fund, it's a grant loan facility or is G O G?
Honorable Chair, no, it's not. It's a P P P arrangement. So we have a developer who is constructing that for the company and in, intend who swap land on lease for him to also develop to recoup the.
That's how come you get monies in your account and you spend. And uh what type of entertainment? You mentioned entertainment. Is it Adoua or K T? Or, I mean, we want to understand what entertainment?
Thank you, Honorable. Uh, when we organize events, we are supposed to have music provided. We bring in artists, we engage DJs to. Then we also have the cultural beat also there to uh make the place exciting to attract the general public to visit the fair grounds for the exhibitors to also make some sales.
But the trade fair that is under construction, you still hold uh Adoua there exhibitions?
Honorable, what we do is we look out, we go out to organize events from a high venue.
A high venue?
Yes. For Westus, for instance, for the past three years, we've been organizing grants since the, the last time we were at the Ghana International Mall on, at Ableja, we were there. On twenty-first Nov- uh September every year, we organize Osajifu Made in Ghana Fair at the Kwame Kuma Memorial Park. And uh last year, we ran two of them concurrently in Kumasi and here. This year, we also organized Edoada Grantses, both in Kumasi and in Accra. So it's not like we have not been, been working. Our uh mandate, we still go out and carried it out.
So i- is the place such that you can't hold events there?
No.
At all?
Yes, it's a construction site now.
And um you're, um, I'm told you are, is it a Castford? Yes. And yes, yeah, he said that. He said it should be about forty-five percent complete in eight months, eight to nine months. But still, um, there's, there's not much we can do with a forty-five percent completion project.
My lady, respect, um, Honorable Chair, respectfully, I indicated that it is about.
Did you, did you just refer to us your lady?
Because of my legal background, we run, Honorable Chair. Honorable Chair, I did indicate that um it is between forty-five to fifty percent complete. And we've had a schedule with the contractor and within the next eight months it will be completed, respectfully submitted.
So um hopefully next year, God willing, we should um have a functioning trade fair. You know, I miss, I miss um those days, trade fair.
What we have currently, my um Honorable Chair, respectfully, it is a ten-thousand capacity exhibition center, which is a multi-purpose. So you can be assured that in the next eight months it will be completed so that we can have one or two fairs, but not the grand one because other projects would be ongoing. Thank you very much.
So how many developers do you have at site?
Currently, we have um two. We are expecting the next one to come. That is the A D C, the one to construct the technology hub. And others would follow respectfully.
When you are signing the contract, how many years did you include that in the contract up to today?
Respectfully, we have a maximum of thirty-six months.
The thirty-six months from which year to which year?
That is left to the Director F and A to answer. I wasn't there.
Okay, um, one, one last thing too. Um, so uh you said two developers. So the rest of your property or your landed property, uh, what has become of it or what are you going to use it for?
Respectfully, Honorable Chair, you can be assured that there are so many other um contracts which are under review because we've not have come out with the necessary um, you know, finality. We are unable to speak to that. It is currently before the ministry to assist us review it. So once it is done, we are able to give you a concrete um.
But by now, you should, you should be able to tell us that you have five point five acres. You are using two acres for this, three acres for, uh, one acre for your sports complex, the other acre for this or that. But you, you shouldn't tell us after you have given to developers part of the land. You are now telling us that the document is with the ministry, the ministry is reviewing the whole thing.
Honorable Chair.
Yes, you, you should, unless you don't want to tell us, but you should be able to tell us that with your five point five acres, you are using, you've given, I mean, a part out, the next acre is for this, the other acre is for that. Uh, but, but you, you, after giving two out, what if, um, you use it for something that the developers who have already committed to say, I, I don't want this in my space?
My lady, respectfully, oh, sorry.
I'm not your lady this.
Honorable Chair, the legal background is always a problem. Pardon me, Honorable Chair.
I, I thought that was your Castford background yesterday.
Yes, of course. Once a custodian, always a custodian. Thank you very much, Honorable Member. Um, Honorable Chair, so when it comes to the flagship program, which is costing um not less than forty million dollars, the agreement has in the consideration that is to be given to the contractor. It is supposed to be somewhere around twenty-six acres of land. And like I stated, it is under review, so I am not able to give an emphatic statement. Again, when it comes to the horizontal developments, the arrangement is that the contractor will be given twenty acres. This one is also under review. There is A D C, that is the Africa Development Company, which is supposed to create or construct the um, the IT infrastructure. That one is five point six acres, but there is a bit of snag. And for that matter, we are unable to state emphatically because um the second trench of whatever is promised by way of consideration has not yet been done and others. And so um I wouldn't be able to give you, there is after secret rate, but considerations have not been able to pass on between us and them and they to us. So we can't really be specific on those things, but I can assure you that about ninety percent of um the, the land more or less are into some kind of um agreement and that is what I can say for now.
What's the total um acres or land size?
All right, so um, Honorable Chair, respectfully, the entirety of the land currently is supposed to be hundred and eight point five acres.
So my.
It is supposed to?
Yes, because there is, um, Honorable Chair, there is a problem. Originally, according to E I ten nineteen sixty-seven, two hundred and thirty-six acres was acquired by uh the, the government of Ghana. And some um parts of the parcels were succeeded to the La Pam Royal Beach Hotel and that of beach hotels. So it was supposed to be led with about one hundred and fifty-six. And um about forty-six acres by way of some conventions that we do not seem to understand and which we have, we have petitioned. The powers that be has been given to um Africa Lake Amusement Park. And looking at the original situation, we, we think that when such would be revested to the trade fair, would be able to make good use of it. So that would account for about forty-six out of the total. And again, um, there are few.
Please hold on. That all accounts for forty-six out of the hundred and eight?
No, that is outside, yeah. But currently, what we can say on authority as drafted is hundred and eight point five acres. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The exhibitions you have been organizing outside and paying for it, are we, were we, were we making profit or loss?
Honorable, honestly, we don't make profit. I would say that we usually break in. That is what we strive to do. Because renting the venue alone, it costs to us. And you see, we also have this government mentality. When you try to raise the exhibition registration fee, the exhibitors are like, you, you are a government institution, government, we are supposed to support trade and that. And because we are also in to support S M Es, sometimes we have, uh, we try to give discounts to the groups so that at least we will have them also come in to promote trade. So we don't actually make profit as we, we should or, or as we are expected to.
All right, thank you very much.
I, I guess before um you, we disengage them, um, the C E O. So I want you to share with us your vision for the Ghana Trade Fair Authority in a year or two to come.
Respectfully, Honorable Chair, please, I'm the Deputy C E O. The C E O is on the national assignment. And so once the question is addressed to the C E O, I pray that when she comes, we are able to.
Unfortunately, since you decided to take, since you decided to take that responsibility on yourself, we need to, that is why we always say we want the head. If you are not in a position to give us policy on the way forward, then we don't see why you're here.
My lady. Honorable Chair, it would be unfair for me to state that I do not know our policy direction, but respectfully, you indicated that you um were addressing the question to a C E O and so.
Yeah, because you are here in that capacity, even though you are.
My lady, I'm here as a Deputy C E O to support.
Yes, but um all the questions that were um asked of you was to the C E O.
My lady, thank you very much. Um, Honorable Chair, thank you very much. Let me quickly state that when it comes to policy direction, from um next January, you are going to see a, a better Ghana International Trade Fair so far as um our mandate is concerned. We are going to augment our um, our policies. We are going to augment our trade fair activities. What we met, we are going to make sure that in fact we put in policy in place to make sure that our revenues would, you know, come in the necessary inflows. And then we also make sure that there wouldn't be only local or national um assignments so far as exhibitions are concerned. We are also looking at international ones so that we are able to take Ghana to the next level. This I can say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, but um. Thank you very much, but I'll be grateful if you can tell your CEO that we've had an experience where CEOs from Ghana Trade Fair Authority refused to attend upon Public Accounts Committee. So respectfully, this should be the last time we are pardoning a deputy CEO and speaking on behalf of the CEO. But next time, we would want to see the CEO himself or herself in the chair. Thank you very much.
Well, as after, thank you.
All right, now let's go to Ghana Standard Authority and. Yes. And the infraction is on paragraph twelve ninety, and Honorable Frankie Abou will take care of that one.
Thank you, chairman. Ghana Standards Authority. I want to begin by saying that you are not doing bad at all. Total income grew by twenty-four percent. And this mainly as a result of increase in your IGF. So the drive that is producing that effect should be continued. What is not too good in terms of, in terms of your financial performance is the fact that there's a marginal decline in your surplus. In twenty twenty-two, you produce a surplus of twenty-eight million. But in twenty twenty-three, it, it, it got, it, it came down to twenty, came down to twenty-six million. And this is mainly due to increase in employees' compensation. I don't remember government increasing employees' compensation by thirty-three percent. So I don't know whether you employed new staff or what. What accounted for the huge increase of thirty-three percent in employees' compensation?
Honorable chair, the increase was due to government giving a clearance to employ one hundred and seventy-three staff. So that created the employee compensation going up.
As I said, you're not, you're not doing bad, so I'm not going to bother you so much. So let's move to your financial position. Your non-current assets grew by twenty percent. And this mainly due to acquisition of additional property, plants and equipment. I'm hoping that whatever you acquired will be put into good use to generate more returns for the authority. Your non, your current assets grew by fifty percent. And this mainly due to cash and cash equivalents. And this reflected positively on your current ratio, which moved from five, five to one in twenty twenty-two to twelve point one to one in twenty twenty-three. So it means that you have enough cash or enough current asset to meet your short-term liabilities. So I just wanted to say that you're doing well, so keep it up. It's a good sign. With that, with that, with that, chairman, I don't have much to say. They are, they are doing well.
All right, the next infraction is on, no, this wasn't an infraction, this is a financial statement. But then the next one is, which is an infraction, is on paragraph two ninety-nine. And honorable Jeffrey Kenny will take care of that.
Thank you, chair. This infraction has to do with unretired impressed. Unretired impressed. An amount of one hundred and forty-seven thousand and fifty-three Ghana CDs was released to two of your employees as impressed. This amount was not supported by any document like a spreadsheet, sorry, signed sheet or receipts. So it was difficult for the auditor general team to interpret the usage of the money. Due to that, they directed that the said amount be recovered and paid into government chest. I want to ask whether the money has been fully recovered.
Honorable chair, the monies have been recovered. And we've given the audit service a copy of the signed sheet and statement of accounts.
Auditor general, can you confirm from your outfit?
Honorable chair, they provided documents to support an amount of hundred and twenty-two thousand and ninety-two point five-five. Then the balance of twenty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty was refunded. Thank you.
So what happens to, or has it been the practice that monies from our outfit can be released without any supportive document?
Honorable chair, before the monies will be released, statements on how the money will be spent is attached. So when the officer finish the assignment that have been given to him or her, it brings the statement of accounts and the remaining balance is paid into the authority's account. So that is how it's done. All right, the next one is on paragraph thirteen oh four, and Honorable Alexander Hotodje.
Thank you, sir, chairman. Mr. Chairman, this has to do with avoidable overseas travel cost of seventy-three thousand eight hundred and nine Ghana CDs. The auditors realized that an officer should go to travel to Burkina Faso and Democratic Republic of Congo did not have visa. Hence, the authority had to pay an extra cost of eleven thousand one eighty, one eighty-two CDs to reach his flight. In addition to that, they also realized that the leader of the delegation to Abu Dhabi did not use the ticket purchased for him by the authority due to the nonavailability of a troubled visa. He later submitted a claim to the authority and was paid a refund of sixty-two thousand six hundred and twenty-seven, made up of forty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-seven flight costs and thirteen thousand three hundred hiring of vehicle from Dubai to Abu Dhabi and back. The above situation resulted in unnecessary additional cost of seventy-three thousand. They are recommending that that money of seventy-three thousand eight hundred and nine be paid back to government chest. How far have you gone with that?
Honorable chair, the seventy-three thousand eight and zero is made of two different people. One of the officer was sent out to go and work, do calibration work in Burkina Faso, DR Congo. When he got to Burkina Faso and finished his work, he was supposed to move from there to DR Congo. But the application that was made for the visa was unsuccessful. So we've discussed with the travel agent. They suggested that for us not to incur more costs, we have to let the officer come back to Ghana and obtain the visa and move. So in all that particular issue, the Burkina Faso to Accra cost of five thousand four hundred and fifty-six and from Accra to DR Congo at the cost of forty-seven thousand, four thousand seven hundred and sixty. So that makes the total amount of eleven thousand one hundred and eighty-two is the cost of the airfare to Burkina Faso and Democratic Republic of Congo. The authority pay only the difference of nine six six for the reschedule of the flight. The other one, which was the delegation, the one who led the delegation to Abu Dhabi, could not use the ticket. And therefore, the authority who bought the ticket on credit did not pay for that amount, which is the eighty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-one. We, later, he, he had his agent to buy him the ticket. And the travel between Abu Dhabi and Dubai cost him thirteen thousand three hundred, making the air ticket plus the thirteen thousand sixty-two thousand six hundred and twenty-seven, which was refunded to the delegation leader to Abu Dhabi. So that was the, listen, so it's in twofolds. So that is the situation on the ground.
I, I don't understand it is in twofolds. So does it mean there was nothing fishy about the whole thing? Is that what you claim?
Honorable chair, there's nothing fishy about.
So was this an explain to the auditors? Auditors. Auditors, what was your view about it?
Honorable chair, during the audit, that wasn't made clear. So hence, the observation was raised. Now, when the team visited them, they provided documents to support the fact that there has not been any cost incurred by the entity. And so as far as we are concerned, that issue has been resolved, yes.
Chairman, my question is, when the auditors came there, how come you couldn't give this information to them at the time of the audit? Honorable chair, the auditors saw the documents because it's the same documents that we gave to audit service. And there are attachments to the documents. So if they have read it well, they will understand. Wait a minute, if the auditors had read it well, were you there at the time of the audit? Honorable chair, I was there. Didn't they point out this issue to you during the audit? They pointed out and we tried. And did you explain it well to the auditors? Honorable chair, we explained, but sometimes the understanding of the auditor and the ones, because sometimes they think there is something fishy that you have done. But then we went further, when these things were happening, we went further to the travel agent to obtain the statements, which shows that there is no double payment because they were thinking that there have been a double payment. So later, when audit service came, we went in for the statement to show that there's nothing like double payment, but it's rather refund that was given to the leader.
She said, at the heart of this thing is administrative negligence. Now, you buy ticket for someone when you have not cross-checked whether or not the person has a valid visa. I mean, this does not work anywhere. So because the person is traveling, you paid for the ticket even before the visa is issued. Is that a practice at your end?
Honorable chair, this statement that was made by the auditors of seventy-three is in twofolds. One for the officer to work in Burkina Faso and DR Congo. Upon buying the ticket, you realize that when you look at the attachment, you realize that you see nine six six there. The visa was not successful. That is why we spoke to the.
No, sir, sir, please. You buy ticket before visa application, is that what you do at Ghana Standard Authority?
Honorable chair, no, please.
So why did this happen? I mean, pure negligence? It's not about the nine hundred and, you seem to be belittling nine hundred and near thousand cities. That is not our concern. It could be nine, nine hundred cities, it could be thousand cities, tomorrow it can be hundred thousand cities. So it's about the, the checks, the system that you have in place, that somebody wants to travel. You, you do not have a, do you have a protocol department that does your visa and ticketing issues and all of that?
Honorable chair, please, yes.
And they did not cross-check whether or not the person involved has a valid visa before issuing at the ticket? Is that what happened?
Honorable chair, I think they assume.
You do not assume in this instance?
That is why they issued.
What, what is the current status? What is the current arrangement at your end?
Current arrangement, visa before ticketing.
Visa before ticketing?
Yeah.
So you are assuring this committee, please, this is lie TV, you are assuring this committee and the entire country that Ghana Standard Authority will not see such an infraction again. Is that the case?
Yes, honorable chair.
So we take you by your word?
Yes, honorable.
Because, I mean, it doesn't sound sweet. You sit here and nine hundred and, it's not the nine hundred, we don't care. I'm sure nine hundred, you can pay from your pocket. But it's about the, the lapses in the system. And it ought to be corrected, corrected. You need to tighten the, you don't just issue ticket without visa. It doesn't work anywhere, sir.
Sir, you said something that you bought a ticket for somebody to go to Abu Dhabi and they couldn't use the ticket or they couldn't go, why? Honorable chair, the person involved is a minister. So it was assumed that with his diplomatic passport, he can travel to Abu Dhabi without any cost. But then, when he got there, he have an issue because some of the airline doesn't take some of the diplomatic passports, so without visa. So unless you get a visa, you cannot fly on that particular airline. And that was the issue with this particular one. So why, why was that the fault of the auditors? Why was it the fault of the auditors? That you would say that if they had read it properly. You see, there, there's a document attached with the reason why this, but that have been something that. Sir, if I were you, I wouldn't go to that tangent because the auditors will keep on coming to your place. And you are belittling them on national television. They will come and see you again. Honorable chair, I withdraw. Oh. Now you've withdrawn it? Yes. Let me go deeper into it. Okay, now let me call Ghana Supply Company. Ghana, uh, Standards Authority, madam would want to ask you a question.
It's, it's about, is it your lab? The lab or is there a lab, a facility that you have there to test some complicated? How, how, how is, how is it functioning? Honorable chair. It saved someone, I knew, that's why I'm asking, how is it functioning? Is it, and does it need help? If there's anything we can do to make sure, I mean, it's up and running properly, like it's supposed to do because like I said, it saved someone. And so that's why I'm asking, how is it functioning? What is it that you feel government can do, public accounts can do through government to make sure adequate budgetary allocations are made so that it will continuously serve, continuously serve the purpose for which it is there?
Honorable chair, our labs are working very well. Our only problem is more money to modernize them. But currently, they serve their purpose. We are delivering the services as required by the public and government. Thank you.
Just, I want to ask, based on diplomatic passport, so in your outfits, anybody holding diplomatic passport wanted to travel, don't you inquire whether that country accept diplomatic passport or not before they embark on the journey?
Honorable chair, we do. That's the outfit of the procurement unit, that's that. But I don't know what happened actually in that particular situation.
Yes, are you going to put in place not to reoccur these issues again?
So we've noted, honorable chair, we've noted with concern. So we are not going to allow that. That's why now even a day before you travel, before we buy the ticket for you. Because make, make sure that everything is intact. Okay, now Ghana Supply Company Limited, you are here, right?
Honorable chair, Ghana Supply Company Limited, it's an agency under Minister of Finance.
Minister of?
Finance.
Finance?
Yes.
All right. Okay, then. In that case, we are done, but hold on for a public interest question from the vice chair.
Thank you. I have, I have two issues. One. I mean, I refuse to look at you directly. I'm intimidated. It has to do with some factories that was built by the ministry under the Ghana Enterprises Agency program. And this enable youth projects. And it's scattered across the country. As we speak, nothing is happening. I mean, for instance, when I take my constituency, I have an enable youth factory in my constituency. In the last one year, we've installed machines and everything, but it is not functioning. What is happening, Minister?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, it is not true that nothing is happening to the enabling youth factories. Somewhere in, at in Apple, we advertise to invite the private sector to come and run those existing factories. There are some of them that have been constructed, but the machines have not been fixed. And so we have procured eight machines to fit into eight of those factories. There are some of the factories which we didn't get the private sector to show interest. That includes the banana factory in your constituency. So I want to use this opportunity to call on the private sector who are interested in running the banana factory in your constituency to show interest and go through the process so that we can have an agreement with them. So we are doing a lot to make sure that those factories are active and running. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for the commitment and everything and the invitation that private firms should come in. So they come to your ministry or where do they go to?
Mr. Chairman, since this is public institution, all those interested parties should come to the ministry.
All right.
And then particularly to the Chief Director's office. And then they will be taken through what they have to do so that they can run those factories.
My other concern has to do with the National After Coordination Office. And this was an office that was set up to promote after in Ghana. I mean, we've seen what they are doing. What is the current status of the office? I mean, because I ask this because, I ask this because in the last eight, nine months, workers have not been paid salaries.
Mr. Chairman, I'm hearing this for the first time. And I want to find out, not to ask you a question, but just want to know which workers have not been paid. Because as far as I'm concerned, after is African project, it is not owned by Ghana government. Ghana government holds the secretariat.
Minister, I'm not talking about after. I mentioned that the National After Coordination Office, NCO, that is under the Ministry of Trade. So I'm not referring to after, yes.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were talking about after.
Yes, so just go and find out, because I'm reliably informed that salaries of workers in the last nine months have not been paid and it is not fair. These are families, big persons who. Yes, so Chief Director, I don't know, Chief Noah, are you able to give some information on this?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. The NCO office was being run by someone who was on contract, his contract ran out. So there is a senior officer from the ministry who is manning the place. And as far as I know, everybody there is being paid, who has a contract is being paid. And we have other staff from the ministry also in there working.
I don't want to drag this matter, just go back and do your investigation. And you know that people are not being paid and people are struggling, boy say bruh, thank you.
Okay, Minister, you are discharged.
That's not the case, but we'll find out.
All right, you are discharged, Minister. We call Minister of Transport, please. Uh, clerk, please swear them in.
Swear by the almighty God.
Swear by the almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
Such in the committee issue.
Such in the matter issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Honorable Minister, introduce yourself and allow your other officers to introduce themselves.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Joseph Bukarini Kwe, the Minister for Transport and the Member of Parliament for Saboba constituency. I have with me the directors from the ministry.
My name is Richard Fedele, Director General Administration, Minister of Transport.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Derek Quatin, Chief Internal Auditor, Minister of Transport.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Julius Nikwekote, Chief Executive Officer, Driver and Vehicle License and Authority.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Paul, I'm Pedu, Director of Finance, DVLA.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Nathaniel Amono-Wolson, within the Minister of Transport, Director in my resource.
Okay, your infraction is just one and is on paragraph twenty ninety-two on earned salaries. And Honorable Kenny will take care of that one, please.
Well, thank you, Chair. This infraction is about an earned salary. Two persons from your outfit, namely Daudu Mutala and John Ajekun Kufua, I presume not the former president. Vacated post between August twenty twenty-three and December twenty twenty-three. But we paid salaries totaling eleven thousand seven hundred and seventy-three point three nine. The auditor general recommended that the chief executive officer should recover the said amount with interest and same paid into government chest. Fortunately, management responded that they had recovered the amount and were yet to pay into government chest. We are making a follow-up to ascertain whether the said amount was paid. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, please, the said amount was paid, but it was first of all paid wrongfully into the authority's own accounts. Then our attention was drawn to that, then we made it, we corrected the mistake and then paid to the auditor general's recovery account, number one zero one eight three three one four seven zero zero one five. And we have copies of the receipts.
Was it paid with the interest?
Mr. Chairman, no, it wasn't paid with the interest.
Why was it not paid with interest?
Mr. Chairman, it was, I think that interest aspects later came to our notice. And by then, they've already informed the two people to pay the said amount. But we were making follow-up as to where they are, so we can make the interest when I got to know about the issue. But we've not been able to get in touch with them as we speak.
So what promise are you giving to the house in terms of payment of the interest?
We will, we will continue to pursue the issue and then when we get them, we will revert.
Auditor General, can you confirm from your outfit?
Honorable Chair, the actual amount of eleven thousand has been recovered.
Do you mean eleven thousand or eleven thousand seven hundred and seventy-three point three nine?
I meant eleven thousand seven hundred and seventy-three.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Minister, this is a public interest question. I think of late, we've heard a lot in the space of DVLA. Now that the agency under you is here, where the CEO would like to tell, would like him to tell Ghanaians what exactly DVLA wants to do. I think we've heard a lot of talk, we want to see action, what exactly does he want to do? And how will he communicate to the public what he wants to do at the DVLA? To make it fit for purpose and also modernize it as well in this current age of digitalization? What is he doing? We've heard a lot and so we're giving him the opportunity to tell the people of Ghana what exactly DVLA is doing. And his vision as a CEO of DVLA, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The authority DVLA is mandated to do driver and vehicle registration. Not just that, but to make sure one goes through the process to get these requirements done. One getting into office, I realize accessibility is a problem. So far, we have been able to open six offices to help people have.
When you say accessibility, what do you?
Let me, let me give you example. You stay in a place like Suedru, you want to renew your license, which is around seventy to eighty Ghana cities. Now you must pick, you must move from Suedru to Elmina, sorry, to Winiba or to Waja, to have this service delivered to you. It tells you that, that's why people have access, that's why people take advantage of the system and engage in all manner of guruboyes. But when offices are located at least in every region or at least they are accessible to where the magnitude of cars are huge, it helps to bring these issues down.
How many offices do you have currently?
Currently, we had thirty-four and we've added six, we've added six to it in the space of ten months. Tomorrow, I'm commissioning a new one in Dassoma, so making it seven.
And are they spread across the country?
That is our quest, to spread them across the country. We did one in, we did one in Adenta, we did one in Akweta, Akweta, one in Asabankesi. We did another in Bolli, we did one in Bechim and Doma. We are going to Asen Kugra, we are going to Nalugu, we are going to.
It is not where you are going to, I want you to tell me what you have done. You said you came to me thirty-four and you have added six, so I wanted you to share the six. Akweta, Adenta.
Adenta, Bechim, Doma, Asabankesi, Bolli and Adenta, yes.
Okay, okay, so please continue.
Then we also, I also came to the realization that most of the equipment, earth-moving equipment in the country were not registered. So quickly, I had a press conference to inform each and every agency that deals with earth-moving equipment to also come to us, then also register their earth-moving equipment. Then we also had compliance guys to go on the field to also check them. That, I don't have the figure exactly in as of today, but the last time I checked, we did over six thousand registration of earth-moving equipment as human office. We also registered some at the port of entry because of the fight against galamsi, we didn't write. Now, because most of them were not registered in the system, when they are being caught, you don't have any information about the machine, who brought it to Ghana, who registered it. So we made it a point to begin with the registration of earth-moving equipment right at the port of entry. And that we've also done over four thousand over there. Now, we've also, we also did what we call the Community Engagement Program, where we go around communities to also educate people and break that stereotype of DVLA is corrupt, DVLA is this, this. So we can educate drivers, educate the people about what DVLA entails, what we also do. Then we have, so far, we have also done what we, we are also having a foreign policy with the Ministry of Foreign Affairs, where DVLA will be located in most of the embassies outside Ghana. If anyone here gives you a passport picture and tells you that, get me driver's license, that license that will produce for you is fake, because we need your biometric details to be able to produce you with a driver's license. But they are not here. So most of the licenses they have outside there is not really correct, it's not correct. But we can give our software out to foreign countries to victimize our own. So we didn't fit to go there with the help of Foreign Affairs to do the corrections for them. That is the policy we are also embarking on. Then, what policy again? Then we are also changing the number plate. Before that, let me speak about our international biometric system. We were not able to meet ISO specifications when it comes to issuance of license, international license and issuance of vehicle licenses, because it's just handwritten, which is not accepted by most countries. We procured machines, gotten the design to be accepted by ISO, so we can do proper international biometric page for our clients from twenty twenty-six. Then the new number plate, the current number plate we have is not scannable. So anyone just brings a car, not pay duty, go out there to the streets, get the boys by the roadside to emboss a number plate for them. And we want to end that era, where people just get up and they not pay duty, just pick a number. What they do is that, they go through the police station, they go by the police station. When they see cars involving accidents, then they put their number plate on, they go and emboss it and put it on. Sometimes with the help of some officers, they have what we call the custom documents, the chassis number. They'll bring the car of the same type, get a place, knock the number plate on it. Then you'll be using their, knock the chassis number on it, they'll be using their number plate out there. So we've done research to get to know all these strategies they use. But the one we are going to introduce, one will be, will not be having here of registration, which tells you that nobody can buy. of registration, which tells you that nobody can buy a car or nobody will wait to the next year before registration of a vehicle. Because every vehicle that must be in the system must be, must be a vehicle that will be identified or can easily be identified by DVLA. But with what we had, we, some of the vehicles, we are, we are not having information on them until we register the DP stickers at the port, which I'll come to that. So the one we are bringing now is scannable for security information. You wouldn't need DVLA to be in office before we give those security, uh, 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 information out. A police officer will have access to that scannable machine. So in case of anything, they know who the right person is, who they are supposed to hold responsible. Then it's also help to prevent smuggling of cars. Now-
What kind of security details are you going to put?
Now, it's going to be RFID chip embedded. So with the RFID chip embedded, the system is going to remain only with the authority, DVLA. With the RFID chip embedded, it will be very difficult for anyone there, those companies out there, which I'm going to deal with them very soon.
CEO, is the details that is going to go on there because they are people's personalities? So what kind of details are you going to put on, on, on?
On the, on the, on the number plate?
You said it's going to come with a lot of security details. Now I'm asking that a number plate, let's say, uh, Rankin's number plate. You're saying that it will be equipped with security features such that if the police should scan, they'll know that truly belongs to Rankin?
Yeah.
So what, because in, in, in putting out somebody's security out there, someone, I mean, a bad person can also get hold of that. So that is why I'm asking, what kind of information are you going to put?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. We have data protection laws, so we'll be compliant with that law. Currently, what we have is just going to be the same form, but now in a more, in a digitalized form, not going to be the paper form anymore. So we are not going to move away from this information-
And it's not going to have, um, the user's surname on there?
It depends on-
On the number plate?
It depends on what the law says. We'll go by-
You don't tell me it depends on what the law says. You are joining, so you should be able to tell us that the law says A, B, C, D. I'm asking you a specific question. Is it going to have the user's surname on the, uh, number plate?
We don't put names on number plates.
I asked a specific question, you said, no, we are not going to put-
I, I was wondering why that question, sorry, but we don't put names on number plates, that's why.
You were wondering why that question?
Because we don't put names on number plates.
What are you telling me? People pay to have their names on number plates? And you sit here as a DVLA boss, you tell me you don't put numbers on number plates? Haven't you seen specialized numbers with people's surnames and personalized names on number plates? Yes or no, please?
Yes.
So why are you telling me you don't put number, names on number plates?
So I can explain that.
Not that you can explain that. Do, you don't expect me to ask you that question? That is what you said, you don't expect me to ask you that question because people do not put their number plate, their names on their number plate. That is a blatant lie. You have people who pay for specialized number plates and they have their- I'm asking you, you just mentioned that there, there are going to be security features and I'm asking, is that going to include people's names on that plate? And I said you don't expect me to ask you that question? Are you not the DVLA boss?
Honorable Chair, I think he was trying to explain that we have different types of numbers that you can acquire.
Honorable Minister, I understand that. He said he doesn't expect me to ask him that question because we don't put names on number plates. You're the DVLA boss.
I-
This is something that even a one, two, three-year-old would know, that, oh, my father has this, um, number, name, because we have personalized number plates, don't we?
They, they do.
Honorable Minister, don't we have personalized number plates?
Uh, I think he was saying that he expected the question to come at another time, not when he was explaining-
Minister, I understand you perfectly, but he said he doesn't expect us to, ask me to ask him that question.
Okay, so, um-
So if he can redraw that, um, statement, that is fine because we have people with number plates out there, personalized number plates out there. So respectfully, we are here on based on questions and inquiries that citizens of Ghana want to know and that is why we are here.
Honorable Chair, respectfully, I will draw. That was, it's not to say you don't know what you are saying. It is just to say that the normal person who goes out there to do registration, we don't put the name on the number plate. It is out of a, a, a special, uh, uh, provision that is made, that's where personalized comes in.
So then I ask you a simple question because you said you are going to put in the security features.
Yes.
And so I'm asking, so is that going to include, um, names on? You, that question should have been, no, that is not what, but you don't expect me to ask you that, then why are you sitting in the chair as a, a DVLA CEO?
That's why I, I said, um, I will draw that statement.
So I'm asking you, share with us some of the security features because to be honest with you, out there, you see a lot on social media that this is how the new number plate is going to be, it is going to include your surname, it's going to include A, B, C, D. So now we have the opportunity, the CEO is sitting before us and we are just asking, is that going to include that? Yes or no? That is all.
So, thank you, Honorable Chair.
I don't think I can come to your office and show you disrespect.
The, the new, the new number plate, there's always a provision for personalized identification, um, uh, numbers. When you come and apply for that, certainly it will be given to you. Thank you very much. I want to, I want to also elaborate last on the DP sticker issue, which has to do with the fact that, um, when we got into office or I got into office, the records available to DVLA says that at the end of every month, cars that were being taken from the port or that were being given to us from the port were around thousand eight hundred. But I realize there is something wrong with that because when you check the customs, ICOMs, doesn't really match with what we were supposed to do because every car is supposed to be con- containing what customs gives to us. So I went to the port to speak to them about that, to see some changes. Then the number went to five thousand four hundred in the month of March. I was still not okay with it. So we introduced with the minister and we introduced what we call the DP stickers. The DP stickers now, you know, because the plate, there's no scientific means to check the authenticity of a plate, people just abuse it. Some, some company can bring ten cars, they'll buy just two car, two plates to redraw all the ten cars. But with the DP sticker, it is one time stick on, you cannot take it off. So that's what we introduced and we started issuing the cards with the DP sticker. And I'm so happy to announce that just the month of September, we were, we were able to do fourteen thousand four hundred DP stickers. So from thousand eight hundred to fourteen thousand four hundred, that is what we, we are able to do now and we are hoping to do more.
Then, um, clearly your revenue is going to go up. If from a thousand eight hundred a month, you are making, you said over ten thousand, fourteen thousand, then your revenue is going to go up. I hope that it will not be like I have seen increase in revenue, so then it should correlate with an increase in operating expenses. And then you mentioned that, um, you came in to inherit thirty-four offices and you have built six in eight months.
Not built, we have commissioned six.
You have commissioned?
Not built.
So these were offices that were, um-
We, we, some, we entered into agreement, PPP agreement, we call it the ultra-centered concept.
The what?
Ultra-centered-
Ultra.
-concept, yes. Others to use the municipal assemblies to open.
Then if you can-
On commission, we came to commission it.
Okay, there were offices that were in the pipeline that you've entered into a PPP?
They were not in pipeline with anyone. We entered, we came and co- brought, they call, they-
They were private, uh, offices, okay.
The ultra-centered, that is for Asamankesi and Akweta are ultra centers, but the rest are DVLA. But not that the offices were built and we came to commission it, no. We entered into agreement with, uh, uh, for lease, we went to rent the offices and then we used it.
Then in order to get DVLA offices closer to, I mean, districts, I think you should look into this and see how best you can partner with other private persons or you commission, now that you are getting in more revenue, you can look to establishing offices closer to, uh, um, these places where you see a lot of vehicles. And I believe, one, it will raise your own revenue and, two, it will also reduce, um, the non-registration of vehicles. So I think this is something you should-
Just this morning, I had a meeting with the Chief Executive Officer of GE, Ghana Enterprise Agency, and they've, they've pledged their support so we can collaborate with them, giving them their list. And also we are going to sit down to see where we can, uh, rent their, their, their building for, for office operations.
Okay, yes, they have offices in most of the districts. So you are going to partner with them to make sure you do that. I think it's, um, it's a good thing.
Yeah, Chair, my question to the DVLA boss. Um, I've seen in the country, your men are doing some good job where they are doing mobile, mo- you have mobile team that go around for, uh, those who have a spy, DVLA, uh, renewal, where they are not able to come to the, uh, and then your team always issue receipt also for them. I would like to find out from you what, uh, technology are you employing for, not to physical cash? Because sometimes you may not know, uh, somebody can use your receipts and then collect money and then the revenue will not go into your account. What IT, uh, are you employing to actually, I mean, increase your revenue using that strategy in the country?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We are, we use Ghana.gov through the Ministry of Finance. Then we are also having, we are about to sign onto the cashless system, but you know, it goes through procedures, so we are true, we are, we are, we are almost true with that for, for, for human intervention. So, yes, that is where we are now.
How, where people will just pay and then, and then that's what you are doing?
Yes, yeah, it's allowed.
Yes, Chief Lucas, um, so your new system, how does that, um, build like one system where DVLA, the police and the insurance are benefiting from it? Um, for instance, I was in South Africa recently and every public place that you enter, the normal security person there has a mobile app where he can check the registration of the vehicle and also check the validity of, of the driver. Um, i- is it that you are building a system where you only reside? Because, um, like my brother said, uh, now along the line, you see people wearing DVLA and checking number plates and all of that. That system should be available to the police, but it looks like the police have limited access to your information. So the new system, how does that integrate all three? So that the insurance company, the police and also DVLA would have one system, one ru- road traffic information system so that we all benefit?
Thank you very much. We are, we are doing, we are updating the new, the new system we have, that's a vehicle registration system, that's a VRX. We are updating it to meet, um, uh, this demand. But already Traffic Tech is coming on board and Traffic Tech deals with DVLA, Ghana Police and, um, uh, Ghana Insurance Company, National Insurance Company. We have also again signed an agreement with, um, National Insurance Company. So now, before you get a road ready, you must have insurance. People get the road ready and now they dodge the insurance. We've signed onto that, so we are, we are, we'll be doing the implementation very soon. But with the Traffic Tech, DVLA, National, uh, uh, Insurance Commission and the Ghana Police, we are into one team and we, we do information sharing. So when Traffic Tech is fully rolled out, that collaboration will be there.
In all of this, is it before Parliament?
Oh, yes.
Is it before Parliament?
Yes, please.
But thank, thank you very much.
One last one. I just want to find out, you mentioned biometric details. So is it going to be a new system of biometric details collection or you're going to use the Ghana card biometric details?
In whatever we do, we always use the, we always verify NIA cards before we do it and they didn't charge us for that. So we are going to include the, uh, uh, NIA card.
It's not going to be a new system that is going to cost and then you are asking, um, drivers to come and take their biometric details again?
The same NIA details is what we use.
Thank you.
DVLA, you answered more public interest question than your one infraction you came here with. So, uh, Ade, Ade, he's standing between us. So, uh, Minister, um, the, okay, okay, hold on. What is technical? What is, what, how technical is it? Um, honorable, uh, honorable CEO, the question is, the question is, look, let me ask this question so that he can go. About the insurance and then the, uh, roadworthy, uh, which one comes first? The roadworthy and then the insurance, which one will come first?
What we do currently is roadworthy first, but we don't need vehicle registration number for insurance. We need the chassis number of the car for insurance.
But Chairman, sorry, we need to know the car is roadworthy before we insure it for you. So how, as an insurer, sitting in my office, how do I know that your car is roadworthy before I do the insurance for you?
They're, they're driven from port cars and then the DV cars, defective vehicles and cars, we don't check them, but yet we issue them with insurance.
That is short period. We are talking about a year cover for insurance.
DV is for one year.
I understand, but it depends on the insurance, but ideally I must know the car is roadworthy before I insure. That's, that's a normal practice. That's a normal practice.
Okay.
You may have very good plans for bringing that thing, but-
Okay, this is, look, look, this, this is-
The, the roadworthy must be there before the insurance.
Uh, someone just reminded me that this is not vetting for, for him. But, uh, yeah, I know there are public interest questions, but we'll get him, we'll get him to come, we'll get him to come another time to come and explain to all of us. Uh, the, he has, he has answered enough. Honorable Minister and CEO, you are discharged. Now let's call Ministry of Agriculture.
Chairman, Chairman, oh, they were here. Honorable Chair, we just want to thank you for having us today and, uh, we are ready at any time you want us to come and throw more light on car registration and insurance. We'll make ourselves available. Thank you, Chairman.
Hold on, um, Ministry of, um, Agri, there's a little holder, please. Let's clear Ministry of Transport, um- Local Government and then you take over, please. Let's clear Ministry of Transport, Local Government and then you take over, please. Please, give them sworn in. That's my man. Ah, okay. Have they been sworn in yet?
Aye. Swear by the Almighty God.
Swear by the Almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Madam, could you introduce yourself and your team, please?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. My name is Retanawo Dulisua, Deputy Minister for Local Government, Chief Trans and Religious Affairs. I'm standing in for my honorable minister, Honorable Ahmed Ibrahim. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair. My name is Dela Kemevo. I'm the Director responsible for General Administration at the Ministry, holding the fort for the Chief Director who is in the post. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. My name is Eric Banueele, the Financial Controller of the Ministry of Local Government, Chief Trans and Religious Affairs. Thank you.
Honorable Chair, my name is Rachel Fusua Sapon, the Acting Regional Coordinating Director for Western Region.
Honorable Chair, my name is Kopsin Joseph, the Regional Director, Public Work Department, Takradi.
Honorable Chair, my name is Mikhail Kojouenchi, Regional Accountant for PWD, Greater Akra.
Honorable Chair, my name is Emmanuel Kabinakwa, Asset Manager, PWD, Takradi.
Honorable Chair, my name is Patience King, Accountant, PWD, Takradi.
Okay, Ministry of Local Government. Your first infraction is on paragraph seventeen seventy-eight, non-deduction of rent to the tune of seventy-five thousand. What has happened to this amount?
Honorable Chair, the amount has been paid.
Auditors, could you confirm, please?
Honorable Chair, the amount has been paid.
All right, the next infraction is on paragraph seventeen eighty-four. And it's on withheld taxes not remitted, three thousand seven hundred eighty-eight. What has happened to this amount? Yeah, I'm waiting on the withheld taxes not remitted to GRI.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. The last time we appeared here, we indicated it was paid.
You said it was paid?
Yes, Honorable Chair.
Can the auditors confirm that, please?
Honorable Chair confirmed.
Thank you. The next infraction is on paragraph seventeen eighty-eight and Honorable Kusip Kenedu will take hand of that.
Chairman, thank you very much. This has to do with an unearned salary for one Madame Gloria Demedeme. She was granted a steady leave to the tune of a hundred and three thousand Ghana cedis. And she was supposed to serve abroad. She did not come back. But the auditors also indicates that she's paid an amount of fifty thousand out of that amount of a hundred and three, leaving a balance of fifty-three thousand Ghana cedis, which you ought to recover from her. Has that been done?
Honorable Chair, the money has been paid. Thank you.
The fifty-three thousand one hundred and fifty-four plus the prevailing interest?
Honorable Chair, it has been paid.
And evidence of same shown to the auditors?
Yes, so the auditors can confirm to that or attest to that.
Auditors, can you please confirm that an amount of fifty-three thousand has been recovered with the interest from Madame Gloria?
Yes, Honorable Chair, so in total fifty-eight thousand three hundred and nine was recovered. Honorable Chair, if I may comment, the local government issues relating to local government have been dealt with in our previous meetings. I think what they are here for is the issues regarding the water systems. Sorry, the PWDs, yes. And water, and water systems, yeah.
Okay, madam. It's on the Ministry of... They listed Water and Sanitation Agencies and Ministry of Sanitation and Water Resources. But they tell us all these water systems are under local government. Like Asan Kegua, Community Water and Sanitation Agency. Is that under you?
Honorable Chair, with water is under Ministry of Works and Housing, Water Resources. When you come to, what has to do with our ministry is sanitation issues, but water doesn't lie in our ministry. Thank you.
Okay, then we will deal with the sanitation issues.
Chair. Please, the letter that we received, it's not about sanitation. Today is about Public Works Department from the Western Region and then Greater Akra Region. That's the letter we received.
Okay, so the Public Works what?
Yes, so the letter we received, we have it here.
Madam, the sanitation and water came together. For example, we are talking about uncollected revenue for the Asan Kegua area. That would be something that Ministry of Local Government will answer, right?
Honorable Chair, that will be for Thursday. It's not on invitation for today.
Madam, your ministry is discharged. We will get the clerk and everybody else to get us exactly what needs to be. So if we need to bring Water, Ministry of Water and Water Works or whatever it is, we will bring all of your ministries together on Thursday. You are discharged. Ministry of Agriculture, please. Thank you. Ministry of Agriculture, have you been sworn in yet? Deputy, deputy, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Swear by the Almighty God.
Swear by the Almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Minister, could you please introduce yourself and your team?
Good afternoon. My name is John Dumelo. I'm the MP for Ayawasu, Westwagon and also the Deputy Minister for Food and Agriculture.
Good afternoon, Sir Chair. My name is Paul Siame, the Acting Chief Director, Ministry of Food and Agriculture.
Good morning. I am Solomon Janansa, the Director of Crop Services, Ministry of Food and Agriculture.
Good morning. My name is Emmanuel Adusei, Financial Controller, Ministry of Food and Agriculture.
Good morning, Chair. My name is Erasmus Anno, the Chief Treasurer of Southern Ministry.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. My name is Emmanuel Aligi Kujub, the Chief Veteran Officer of the Ministry of Food and Agriculture. Thank you.
Okay, let me start with this on the supplied items to combat antarast diseases. Five point one million. What has happened to this? The recommendation was for Chief Director to ensure that the laboratory equipment items supplied are installed without further delay. What has happened to it?
Thank you, Chairman. The laboratory equipment have been supplied and duly installed at Pon Tamale and then Bogatanga.
Are the auditors aware of that?
Yes, we have notified them on the installation. Yes, we have notified them.
Auditors?
The installation.
Honorable Chair, we indicated in the report that these supplies had been done, but the installation was outstanding at the time. As we speak, we have not inspected the installation. So with your leave, if that has to be done, we can do that and provide feedback.
Thank you very much. Please follow up with it. Make sure that it is done. Okay? All right. Thank you very much. The next infraction is on paragraph seventeen thirty. Honorable Nakoyo will take care of that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So on the issue of unretired in pressed for foreign travels and other similar activities, a total of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and eight is yet to be retired by your officers contrary to regulations of the PFM Act. Are you aware that this is a breach of the PFM Act?
Honorable Chair, the unaccounted for payment of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and eight as recommended by the auditor. After reconciliation with the auditors, we discovered that that amount is in error and the amount actually is one five eight four hundred. That is unaccounted for and that money is made up of one hundred thousand that has been accounted for. We have reconciled with them. Fifty thousand has been refunded as recommended and eight thousand four hundred has been also accounted for.
And can the Auditor General verify this for us, please?
Yes, Honorable Chair, an amount, that is in terms of cash, of fifty thousand refunded and then the balance of one thirty-eight has been supported with relevant documents.
So can you tell the committee what steps you have taken to enforce the Auditor General's recommendations by sanctions that has been applied to these officers pursuant to section ninety-six and ninety-eight of the PFM Act?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The issue has to do with misplaced of PVs and overlap of PV counting in our office. This was due to movement of offices and the officers involved were called in from their transfers and collaborated with our offices and we on at all this due to reconciliation issues. After that, I've put in place procedures and proper controls to ensure that certain things do not reoccur. Thank you.
Can you please tell the committee the procedures and the proper controls you have put in place? Thank you.
Thank you. The procedures and the processes I've put in place include now all PVs pass through internal audit before payment. And after payment, they have to vet it again before external auditors come in. Secondly, PV register in our office is regularly monthly reconciled to ensure all payment have been accounted. have been accounted for. In addition to that, we invite the internal auditor to do regular internal audit before external audit comes in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, the next infraction is on paragraph seventeen thirty-four. And Honorable Simon will take care of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is an unpresented payment voucher?
All right. There is an unpresented payment voucher to the tune of hundred thousand. Has that been presented now?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, please, that PV has been presented to the external auditors and has been acquainted duly. Thank you.
Have you put in place any measures to ensure that we don't have this happening again?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. The second infraction has to do with the same as the first one and the total amount is almost the same in the sense that one hundred fifty-eight thousand, hundred thousand is this second infraction and same process and procedures apply to this one as well. Thank you.
Can the auditors confirm if that's been done? Thank you.
Honorable Chair, they have presented their PVs and same verified. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. The next infraction is on paragraph seventeen forty-two. And Honorable Agrogue will take care of that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the infraction, an amount of four hundred and eight thousand seven hundred CDs refunded by contractors who were supposed to have purchased vehicles for the monitoring of warehouses projects lodged into the Mofe account instead of the consolidated fund as stated below. Are you also aware that section seven of the Public Financial Management Act two twenty sixteen says that where a principal spending officer receives a subvention on behalf of another entity, that principal spending officer shall remit this subvention into the other entity?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The total amount four hundred and eight thousand seven hundred as recommended by the external auditor has been fully refunded per the recommendation and the relevant document are available for verification, please.
Thank you. The auditors, can you please confirm this?
Yes, Honorable Chair, we can confirm that the entire amount has been refunded.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The next infraction is on paragraph seventeen forty-seven. And Dr. Jassa will take care of that one.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. The infraction relates to misapplication of tractor farm equipment funds. And it was found that between May seventeenth and twenty-second of May twenty twenty-four, you spent an amount of two hundred and fifty-five thousand Ghana cedis on ministers' foreign travels and vehicle repairs. You used a tractor equipment fund to do that. Can you tell us what happened here and what you have done so far about the directive from the auditors?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What happened here was that there was eminent travel by the minister and funds allocated or the minister's accounts was virtually empty. So we had to manage and borrow money from tractors' accounts as rightfully reported by the auditors. And when the auditors came and saw it, they recommended for full refund immediately. Mr. Chair, the full amount has been refunded duly and relevant document are available for inspection. Thank you.
When, auditors, could you confirm if this has been done?
Honorable Chair, so the amount has been refunded back into the tractors' account.
It has been refunded.
It has been refunded.
Okay.
Okay, the next infraction is on paragraph seventeen fifty-one. And Honorable Dipalo. No, seventeen fifty-one. You are the one? Okay.
Thank you, Chairman. As part of, that's a, the infraction is unsupported payments amounting to fifty thousand Ghana cedis. So as part of the preparations for the celebration of the twenty twenty-two Farmers' Day, fifty thousand Ghana cedis was paid to Honorable Yao Adu without the relevant supporting documents to authenticate the payment. Management couldn't also provide a documentary to authenticate the payment as said. So auditors recommended that the Chief Director should recover the amount from the financial controller and pay same to the Auditor General's Recovery's account at the Bank of Ghana, failing with the Chief Director should pay. What is the status quo? Has the money been paid?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As recommended by the external auditor, the money has been fully refunded to chase. Relevant document are available for verification. Thank you.
Yes, auditors, can you confirm same?
Honorable Chair, the amount has been paid into the AG's Recovery's account.
All right. The next infraction is on human resource development and management direct rate. Seventeen fifty-four.
It has to do with unpresented payment vouchers of thirty-one thousand. Has it been presented to the Auditor General and can, yes or no?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Please, the payment voucher is available for verification. It has been presented to the external auditors. Thank you.
Auditors, please, can you confirm?
Honorable Chair, we are here to verify the PVs, whether indeed they have been presented.
When was the presentation done?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Documents in front of me shows that the document was sent to external auditors on the fourth of August twenty twenty-five and they signed it here. Copy is here. Thank you.
When you say external auditors, who in particular? The Audit Service?
Auditor General.
Auditor General. Okay. Okay, so please follow up and confirm for us so it can be cleared of the books. Thank you.
Well noted, Honorable Chair. I'll follow up and revert.
The next infraction is on paragraph seventeen fifty-eight and it's overpayment of service rented for nine thousand five hundred and fourteen. You were to recover this amount. What has happened to it?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The amount as recommended by the external auditors has been refunded. Evidence of payment are available for inspection. Thank you.
Okay, auditors, follow up on that one also. The next infraction is on paragraph seventeen sixty-two and it's on earned salary of twenty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty. What has happened to this amount? Auditors, I'm sorry, did you confirm that?
Yes, I wanted to confirm the earlier infraction that.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, the recovery has been done.
It's been done.
Paid into the AG's Recovery's account.
All right. Thank you very much. Now, the second, the question that I ask about the overpayment on paragraph seventeen sixty-two on earned salary, what has happened to it?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The earned salary of twenty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty has been fully refunded as recommended by the auditors. Evidence of payment are available for inspection. Thank you.
Auditors, could you confirm, please?
Yes, Honorable Chair, we can confirm that.
The next infraction is on paragraph seventeen sixty-six. And Honorable Gappe will take care of that one.
Thank you. This is basically about unpaid rent. You know, by the law, ten percent of your salary is supposed to be there. Those who are occupying government Bangalore. And then some of your staff were occupying government Bangalore and then they are not paying. So it's unpaid rent about thirty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-two. And then in the recommended, the auditors recommended that it should be paid. What is the status of this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The amount thirty-eight thousand has been refunded back to.
Auditors, can you confirm that?
Honorable Chair, the amount has been fully paid.
So, Madam Chair, you see that for this particular one, it's management that failed to do the, to effect the deduction. Now, going forward, if you have, if you have recovered this as payment from the beneficiaries, what are you doing as management to ensure that that deduction is always affected and that you don't have to wait and then go back to them to refund?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As rightly said by the Honorable, the officers occupying government Bangalore are supposed to have their ten percent deducted at source from Controllant Accountant General and same pay to government. We have submitted their details for deductions and the dates per the auditors' recommendation, they calculated to a certain date. From that date onwards has been submitted to Controllant Accountant General for deduction. So henceforth, such may not recur for these people. Thank you.
Okay. So the next infraction is on paragraph seventeen seventy-two. And Nasay will take care of that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Payment of unearned salary. Financial Controller, I would like to find out from you whether this amount has been paid to the Auditor General's account with the interest. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The earned salary of ninety-one thousand thirty-four Ghana cedis, thirty-seven peswes have been fully paid back to government chest. The interest.
No, no, you're on the wrong seventeen seventy-two.
It's on, it's on National Prem Exfeo Secretary. Is, is, is that you? Is it, does it fall under?
No, no.
Okay.
That one is different.
So that should go to Fishers then? Then?
Is, is Fishers not under Ministry of Agriculture?
No, it's a different ministry.
Oh, is it under the new minister?
Yes, please. Okay, Nasay, then rather go to paragraph seventeen seventy-six. That's where the ninety-one thousand is.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Financial Controller, this was also another unearned salary of ninety-one thousand and thirty-four. Please, I would like to find out whether the amount has been paid with interest as the auditors said. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As recommended by the auditors, the total amount of ninety-one thousand thirty-four Ghana cedis and interest of twenty thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven has been paid back to Auditor's Recovery Account. Thank you.
Auditors, can you please confirm for us?
Yes, Honorable Chair, we can confirm that the payment has been done inclusive of interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Minister of Agriculture, we are done. And thank you very much for coming to the conference. You have a question to add, public interest question. Should I allow that? Okay, I will allow that question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Honorable Minister, I hear a lot on the famous in Koko Inketsu Kete. Can you please tell this committee what Inkokon Kete Kete is about? Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. The Koko Kete Kete is a policy which was in manifesto, the NDC manifesto, to be able to help reduce the importation of poultry products. Currently, as we speak, we import what we consume in Ghana. We import over eighty-five percent of it. And so what we are trying to do at this point is to distribute three million day old chicks to households across the country so that we ourselves can be our poultry farmers and then we can develop interest in, in, in the poultry industry. Hopefully, once this is done regularly, we will be able to reduce the importation of poultry products by about thirty or forty percent in the next few years. And that would obviously positively impact our forex market. So every, every, every constituency is, it will be given ten thousand beds. Now, if you break it down, that means every household will be given about fifty day old chicks, including feed.
Did you say household?
Households.
Every household in every constituency?
Every household.
In every constituency?
Two hundred households, two hundred.
Uh huh. Yes, you are now talking.
I don't want trouble with you, madam. Please.
Because you said, you said every household.
Sorry.
Yes.
Two hundred households in every constituency would be given fifty beds.
I'm giving the opportunity to correct yourself because next year, when you come here, we assess that. That's what I'm asking you. Did you say every household?
Every, two hundred households.
Thank you.
In every constituency will be given fifty day old chicks, including feed. And that would commence pretty soon.
Is it the constituency or the district?
Constituency.
Constituency?
Yes, please.
Well, so, so we, we appreciate the fact that this is a program that started in the elsewhere administration and that it's been rebranded into Inkokon Kete Kete. And, but, please, your Vice Chairman is on the floor and you are making noise. This is, this is serious. So what is it that you are doing differently from the previous one? Because I know that the previous one, you were supplying this day old chicks to, and what level of training are you giving to the households? So that it becomes commercialized and it doesn't turn into people's soup in the household? Because fifty day old chicks to two hundred households, the way I love chicken in my house, I may not commercialize it, but it will end up in the, in the, in the pot. So please, what is it that you are doing so that you commercialize the? in the pot. So please, what is it that we are doing so that you commercialize the Koko Kitzing Kitzing and the whole nation stands to benefit? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, interestingly enough, we didn't hear much about your policy in the previous administration and so a lot of people didn't benefit. But with this one, we have been as open and transparent as we can and we are channeling it through the right agencies. What we don't want is a lot of mortalities in that we want to train those who are going to receive the day-old chicks to be able to have adequate training so that they can be able to raise the chicks, the broilers to be six weeks, eight weeks and then thereafter, you know, they can slaughter it or, you know, the the relevant agencies will come and buy it from them. And so we are putting in place measures. We want this policy to be very successful because indeed it is a national policy and so far it's generated a lot of interest and we hope that very soon we will stop the importation of our poultry products. And so we are ensuring that things will go on well and go on right.
Thank you, Farmer John. And first of all, I thank you for confirming that this is a project that started in the elsewhere, but it wasn't that large and it wasn't really announced. Two, and also the measures that you are putting in place
Yes.
to ensure that what started in Akufado's era will be sustained in Jomames' era. I mean, governance is continuous.
I mean, this time, it's been bigger and better.
But when are you starting the project? When are you starting the project?
I don't want to give a specific date so that I'll be caught unawares, but it's going to be start, it's going to start in November, sometime in November.
Thank you, Farmer John, for the confirmation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me just let you know, you said you don't know when it's going to start, but so somewhere in November.
Yes, please.
You know, in the operation of the budget reallocation.
Yes, please.
If the funds are not utilized in this particular year.
Yes.
You know what it is?
Yes, please, we are well aware.
So then if by November, usually after the budget, nothing really happens.
Yes, please.
And so that if you sit here and tell us that by November.
Yes, please.
And we have just two months or less to end the year after November.
Yes, please.
And then you should know what you are talking about.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Minister and your team, you are discharged.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any other agency that I haven't called?
Members, we are still on set. Ministry of Africa can leave us, but on this, on this, on this, we are still on set. That's what I said. Yeah, yeah. We are being carried live. We'd like to thank all the audities. We'd like to thank all the audities who attended upon us today. We look forward to beginning properly the report of the Auditor General on the public boards of Ghana, public boards, public accounts of Ghana, public boards, corporations and other statutory institutions for the period ended thirty-first December twenty twenty-four. These are the public agencies of of governments. And we have Ministry of Energy and Green Transition. Under Ministry of Energy and Green Transition, we have Electricity Company of Ghana, we have Bulk Oil Storage and Transport, that's BOST. We have Valco Trust, we have Ghana National Petroleum Corporation, GMPC. We have We Power Authority, we have National Petroleum Authority, NPA, Energy Commission, Energy Fund, Unified Petroleum Price Fund, Ghana Grid Company Limited, that's Gridco. We have the National Education Scheme, the Ghana Atomic Energy Commission, as well as the Volta River Authority, VRA Health Services Limited. So under, all these agencies are under, all these public boards, sorry, under Ministry of Energy and Green Transition. Then we also look at Ministry of Tourism, Culture and Creative Arts. Under that, we have Ghana Tourism Authority and the Tourism Development Fund. So these are the agencies, ministries and public boards that we're going to look at tomorrow, God willing. Thank you very much, JTV and the other team. We are grateful to you for all the support you continue to give to us. Thank you.